It's six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting. Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Lord, we're here in the middle of the holiday season, Lord. We just ask you to watch over all the families, employees, law enforcement, all emergency personnel, Lord. Some of them won't get to be with their families for different reasons, the military. We just ask you to watch over all of them and watch over the mayor and council as we go through the conversation through the city agenda. Amen.
Kurt, please, since you found the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flyer that may not state the merit to the relevant which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Copy of the agenda. If you look on your agenda, you will see item H, that is 19, instead of 18, if you'll correct that. And item J was left off. This was a part of the last month's agenda where, a meeting where we, it might have been a month before that, prior to that, but we added the Car Club street closing update, and that will be Kurt, instead of Jim, actually. Tony spoke for your partner in crime on that, but he is not here tonight, Kurt, so hopefully we have some info. With that being said, we entertain a motion to add J and change 18 to 19.
Make a motion that we accept these changes.
Put the agenda with the change.
One question.
Yes.
I've got J on one of these agendas as being requested approval about the whole way to speak King Garden.
I've got Car Club street closing.
I think you're looking at I.
I have J.
Lisa, did you look at Mr. Looney's agenda and say if we can correct it?
That's the old rule, old one. Remember the first one I gave you? That was how one I did it?
Pardon me? You got that all marked up? Are you sure we want to change back to yours?
We will change to the shortest one, how is it?
I have this one.
No, I've got another. I'm standing out. I mean, yeah, Car Club. Have a motion, second any further discussion? Being on, all favorable by show of hand? Thank you, council. The minutes of the 2005, excuse me, November the 5th, 2018, regular meeting, and I think we have the November 14th, 2018, this is by November 5th, 1st, we'll close up at 14:00.
Monday, November 5th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested John Fousk give the invocation. He requests Jim Looney lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Looney, who stated that he would like to add an item to the agenda regarding the city's long-term watershed monitoring. He stated David Hall will present quotes for the service. Mayor Weaver stated that we would add this to the agenda as item K under new business. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated for the record that Councilmember Anson Navy was absent from this meeting. City Clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of the October 1st, 2018, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the October 31st, 2018, called meeting. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by three votes, with Kurt Ratfield abstaining as he was absent from the October 31st meeting. Item A, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to give an update on the city manager search. Mr. Looney stated that council had received 36 candidates' resumes and that he had requested that council send an email to Mr. Lassiter of the Carl Vincent Institute ranking the top five candidates by November 9th. He stated that he planned to hold a called council meeting on November 15th for council to speak to Mr. Lassiter. Item B, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney to give an update on the city sanitation service. Mr. Looney presented council with a proposed rate increase. Discussion followed regarding communication with the housing authority and city merchants. Mr. Looney stated that he had not discussed the rate increases with either. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to table this proposal until he had a chance to speak with the housing authority. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Mr. Looney stated that he would rather talk to the authority after the rates were approved by council. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Looney if he had informed the general public of the increase, and Mr. Looney stated that he had not. More discussion followed. Mayor Weaver called for a vote. Motion to table passed unanimously. Item C, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present council list of restaurants interested in purchasing a license to sell liquor by the drink if the fee were lowered from $3,000 to $1,500. Mr. Looney stated that of the 10 restaurants he contacted, only three were interested. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion that due to the lack, that due to the lack of interest, the license fee remained the same. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Following the vote, Mayor Weaver asked councilmembers Tony Fountain and Kurt Ratfield if they had contacted the merchants and the Car Club regarding the closing of Main Street for the monthly car shows. Councilmember Ratfield stated that he had contacted several of the downtown merchants, and all of them felt the car show and street closing were not positive for their businesses. Councilmember Tony Fountain stated that he had not had a chance to contact the Car Club. Mayor Weaver stated that he would like to keep this item on the agenda for next month's meeting under Old Business to give Councilmember Fountain a chance to contact the Car Club. Item D, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver called on Attorney Bill Pickett to present for council's review a draft of the proposed BLIT ordinance. He asked council to review before the next council meeting. He stated that by the next council meeting, we could have the first reading. Mayor Weaver noted that this would be an item for Old Business next month. Item E, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to discuss the purchase of the old Integra Bank property on North Main Street. Mr. Looney stated that Mike Disney, Chair of the Downtown Development Authority, had not contacted Community Bank of Pickens County to complete the application for the note. Mayor Weaver advised Mr. Looney to contact the bank himself and get the paperwork for the loan completed, then have the necessary members of the Downtown Development Authority meet to sign the paperwork. Mayor Weaver stated to keep this item on Old Business for next month's meeting. Item A, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present a request from the Jasper Merchants Association to close Main Street on December 1st for the Christmas parade. He stated that they were requesting to close North Main at 4:00 PM and Highway 53 and South Main at 6:00, and both remain closed until the parade was over. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to allow the closing. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item B, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present a request from the ACES Youth Home to close South Main Street on December 2nd for the Christmas Tour of Homes event. He stated that they were requesting to close South Main from 1:00 until 5:30 PM. He stated that they are also requesting to use the city's green space. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to allow the closing and use of the space. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item C, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present Form 8038-G information form for governmental, tax exempt governmental bonds. He stated this form was required to be filed with IRS. He stated that the financing company for the new fire engine capital lease had not had filled out the form as a paid preparer for us to sign as the borrower. He stated that the amount on the form did not match the principal amount borrowed due to issue costs. Finance Director Lisa Hall stated that the number on the form did not tie to any number in the contract. Mayor Weaver asked Ms. Hall to contact the city's auditor for guidance on how to proceed. He then called for a motion to allow the form to be signed by the city manager and mayor after getting an okay from the auditor. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item D, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney for an update on the Georgia DOT project involving the widening of State Route 53 from Highway 515 to East Spring Street. Mr. Looney stated that all property owners affected have received a notification letter from the DOT and they would be conducting environmental surveys along the route. Mr. Looney stated that project date had been moved to 2021. Mayor Weaver stated that this process was a good step forward, no action taken. Item E, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to council proposed vacation policy changes for firefighters, police officers, and water plant operators. He stated that these employees work more than 40 hours per week on average, and he is proposing that they are offered additional vacation time. Discussion followed regarding the cost to the city. Mr. Looney stated that he did not have the cost information. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to table this item until more information could be obtained. Motion failed for lack of a second motion. More discussion followed. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to table this item until after the next council work session, whereby council could have a better understanding. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated to keep this item as Old Business on next month's meeting. Item F, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Attorney Bill Pickett, who stated that there had been some surveying on Burton Street, and it had been discovered that there were city sewer lines that the city did not have easements. He stated that he would write up the easements and have council approve at a later date. Mayor Weaver stated to keep this item as Old Business on next month's meeting. Item G, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present for council's approval a quote from trail and signs in the amount of $5,350. He stated that they would clean and use cameras on the drainage system at the Speedburger Highway 53 and Jones Street in order to determine obstruction, size, junction boxes leaks, and slope of the system. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to approve the quote. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood to present an application for selling alcohol, beer, and wine by the drink from the new owner, Frank Cass, of the Peaking Garden Restaurant located at 28 Bill Wiggington Parkway. Mr. Underwood stated that the background checks had been received, and there is nothing that would prevent him from obtaining an alcohol license. He is requesting approval to continue the application process. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item I, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood to present to council the 2019 alcohol license renewal applications. See list attached here, too. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to approve the license renewal request, and Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item J, under New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Finance Director Lisa Holt to present the 2019 operating budget for council's review. Ms. Holt stated that the public hearing on the budget would be held on November 14th, and we would expect to adopt the budget at the next regular council meeting held December 3rd. Discussion by council follows. No action necessary. Item K, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Water and Sewer Superintendent David Hall to present to council two quotes for the city's long-term watershed monitoring. Mr. Hall stated that CCR Environmental Inc. quoted $13,720 for 2019, $22,180 for 2020, and $14,260 for 2021. He stated that Fox Environmental quoted $24,200 for 2019, $24,200 for 2020, and $16,850 for 2021. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the quote for 2019 only. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to accept the low quote from CCR Environmental in the amount of $13,720 for 2019. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of October 2018. Chief Greg Levelgave a report of police activities for the month of October 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of October 2018. Councilmember John Fousk gave a report on JYSAs. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the public hearing to be held November 14th, 2018.
entertain a motion. A motion to approve the minutes as read?
Thank you.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Being on, all favorable by show of hand? Hand was not here, and Tony's out, so it'll be three, four, and maintain one afternoon. Let me know that Tony Fountain is not present this evening. I do not know why. Okay, November 14th, 2018, public hearing?
Public hearing, Wednesday, November 14th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Jim Looney give the invocation. Councilmember Anson Navy said, "Red, led, and the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance." Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the floor to comments and questions regarding the proposed 2019 operating budget. Brief discussion of the budget process followed. There were no public comments. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver adjourns the hearing. Council is scheduled to convene next at the special call meeting on November 15th, 2018.
entertain a motion? Motion to approve? Motion seconded. Discussion. Being on, all favorable by show of hand? Thank you, council. November 15th, 2018, called meeting.
Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested John Fousk give the invocation. He requested Councilmember Sonny Proctor lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment of the city manager position. Councilmember John Fousk made such motion. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver brought the meeting out of executive session and reopened the meeting. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember John Fousk made such motion. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held December 3rd, 2018.
entertain a motion? Motion to approve? Motion seconded. Discussion. Being on, all favorable by show of hand? Old Business. Not been on city manager position, Jim?
We will be having interviews on this campus next door.
Would you be a favor, go back and explain for the public while we had the call meeting, while we had to go into closed session in order to discuss? Do you think like that to the general public?
The meeting on November 15th was to review the results of a vote taken on candidates for the city manager position. As you heard in minutes, the vote was, each council member's vote was sent to the Vincent Institute, and they compiled them, making a report on that evening. Council members accepted four candidates for interviews. All have been scheduled. All accepted interviews, all have been scheduled for next Monday, the 10th. We have them here on campus in room 2, excuse me, 318, next door. They call it the seminar room. Interviews will be at 9:00, 11:00, 2:00, and 4:00. So we will need some time after that, I'm sure, to compose ourselves after four interviews. But we will, we'll be meeting here. Next will be another closed session. It'll be opened and moved into closed session immediately for the interviews. I would like for us to be here at 10 o'clock, excuse me, at 8 o'clock to go over the procedures for the day.
You was all around it, but explain to our guests and the public why we need to go into closed session.
It's a personnel issue. Personnel issues are discussed in closed session rather than...
And it's illegal for more than two council members to meet without notifying the press and being an open session. So what we do is go through the process of a meeting, and then we go into closed session so that we don't get ourselves in trouble with rules and regulations that govern mayor and council form of government. So that's why we're going through the same process over and over again.
Believe that would be open.
Otherwise, we just have a meeting, and we can pick who we want, but this has got to go through the process. All right? I think that explains it pretty well. Anything to put on that?
The additional thing I'd like to request while on this subject is work session. We talked about everyone having a list of 12 questions they would like to include it on the form. Results made by Wednesday, and then I will do the compiling of the information and prepare an interview for them. That's part of the reason we want to meet at 8:00, a little bit early, so everybody gets to see the questions. And in your package at the work session, you also have some notes that I cut and paste from Vincent Institute's first letters to council that, find some time to read that before the 10th, if you want.
And you do have this narrowed down to four candidates?
Four candidates.
Being no other, move, item B, sanitation rate increase for consideration?
Council and mayor discussed rate changes at the work session. Does council have a recommendation for consideration?
Let's hope you have some discussion.
Take a motion to approve the new rates that are before us, to be advertised, program to be grown, rates implemented February, for a term of six months review and research.
What was the rate increase?
The rates here are listed in the...
If I need, if I need for the rate?
New rate for residential, Jim, correct me if these are wrong, residential 20, residential seniors 18, housing authority 14, commercial one day 25, commercial two day service 50, commercial four day service 100, commercial five day service 125, restaurant service 150.
That is correct. Second. Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
At the end of that six-month term, I would like for us to really decide what we're going to do. The discussion started with a new trash truck. Employees that run this service deserve, either have any trash truck, or us to make the final decision. In those six months, I would really like for us to have all of our questions answered.
We have somebody, maybe whoever, we need either us submit the questions, what we want to obtain information, so we can make those informed decisions in the next few months, kind of building on what we're starting with, trying to build the program and stuff.
Certainly.
Just send them to you.
Present those to me.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second on the floor for increasing the rates as scheduled, and a copy of that would be given to the local paper as well as the No Pickings.
And we will advertise it with our...
And Pet Your News, we're always Pet Your News, that's it. There, we hit back there, okay. Jim?
We were also putting a letter in the December, I hope we can do it in December 25th, bills, water, sewer, sanitation bills.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate all the hard work you've done on this. I know that it's been trying because we kept coming back to more things that we wanted to evaluate. I think from my perspective, we're looking at this as a slowing the bleeding. I don't want this to be portrayed as an end-all or a solution that addresses all the problems that we found. And we want to pledge to continue to try to make our garbage service more successful, as Kurt said, and also more efficient. So, but I do appreciate the hard work.
Any other discussions? All favorable by show of hand? Item C, vacation policy changes?
Yes, sir. Personnel committee recommends that accrued vacation be changed from 40 hours per week to the scheduled hours that employees work. That would be a change for firefighters to 56 hours, release 42, and water and sewer employees 42 hours per accrued week.
entertain a motion? A motion to approve? Motion is seconded. Discussion? Being on, all favorable by show of hand? Thank you, council. Item D, BLIT ordinance?
Mayor, I brought the ordinance that I drafted to them last month, and I'm sure they've had time to go over it. And, I mean, from my perspective, it's ready to be introduced. Got to have two readings, and it's ready to do that.
Motion? Can I have a copy of that?
I brought about 10 or 12 copies last night.
I thought we had a few.
I didn't bring any more tonight.
Bill, you have yours to do the first reading? Is that what you're stating?
I mean, I didn't bring the coffee with me.
Oh, okay.
I was one. But we've all been over it several times, and...
Lisa's got it, right.
I would ask that you just have, let's have the first reading based on my handout. Like y'all want me to read 20?
Motion to approve the BLIT ordinance as presented by city attorney, next reading, last, final reading next month? entertain a motion? Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion? Motion, I'm sorry?
Second, so we go over the discussion.
Well, that's where the next process will be. Motion, you got a second? Any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions, Bill, I'd like to ask on the ordinance on powers of the city managers. It does need to be the third page, Section 8, one, where it says public officer may apply to the municipal court. Can we change that to the appropriate court?
We can, but the BLIT law, as it reads in the state statute, says municipal...
Okay.
Why would you not want to?
I didn't, I didn't believe the municipal court had the power to do that. But then I, but then after I did the research and read the law, municipal court does have the power.
And then on the...
With municipal court having the power, that doesn't eliminate the other governing bodies, judicial system, to have that authority. So what I believe this would do, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, it would allow, if our municipal court judge is out of pocket, our local judicial officials that have jurisdiction over this would be available to our officers if needed.
Which is very coordinated.
Yes, yes. Just as a way to make it more efficient.
The first court, obviously, would be the municipal court, and you would have the opportunity, if you were one being accused of such an offense, to appeal to the superior court if you so choose. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
And the way, and the way absences are governed by the judicial bodies of the state of Georgia, is that any judge of that court can sign an order designating another judge to sit in the judge.
Okay. Any further discussion there on the next page, Bill?
On Section 8, you had the number seven presence, or was missing from the other draft, the presence of graffiti, which is visible from adjoining public or private property reserved. What was the reason of taking that out?
I don't know where you're talking about.
It's on, it says complaint in realm and municipal court, seizure, lien, and appeal. Section 8, you've got 1 through 6, but...
That's the fourth, how do you just start with?
Well, that's still what I had. I didn't take it out for any reason. I mean, if I've left it out, we can include it.
Well, yeah, if you don't mind, we put that back in.
Can we put what back in?
Number seven, presence of graffiti.
You'll have to give it to him. He doesn't have that.
I'll give you the copy of it.
Okay. I'll make a note to go ahead and do that tomorrow.
Okay. Any further discussion?
On... On page six, in the section, limited liability for code enforcement for no special duty created. Basically, right there where it says plan or design for approval or inspection. Fast second, we put a.
I'm not, I'm, hold on just a minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm on the right page now.
Okay, uh, right there where it says approval or inspection, can we put or activities by the cities, as officers, employees, agents issuance of such permits approved?
We're trying to find. This language mirrors the state law.
It, yes.
I can add it in there, but it won't change the, uh. It won't change its meaning, well, yeah, we can add it in there. But there's, I don't know, I didn't have that language in mind, so. Anything else?
Mr. Pickett, with these changes, will this still be considered the first reading?
It will.
Motion to prove this as the first reading. Got a second, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any, all in favor of what was your hand? Here's for you now. Item E, Burton Street property easement update. Mr. Pickett?
Um, I've got the easement prepared. I have asked Ms. Dotson to call meeting of the housing boards. They've gotten to approve it, they're the ones that signed it, so I'm waiting on that. And that should happen, well, we had Thanksgiving, so it should happen here real quick.
No action, we'll move forward, that'll be item on the next month's old business agenda. Item F, one twenty-five on Main Street purchase update, Mr. Lenny?
Uh, talked to Phil Landrum about this last week. I had been trying to set up a date with Ryan, uh, with the community bank of Pickens County to get the loan application completed. Uh, Phil's got some questions, is setting up a meeting for.
Wednesday at two o'clock.
Wednesday at two o'clock, thank you, Bill, at, uh, community bank of Pickens County.
Who's meeting Wednesday at two o'clock?
Being Ryan's office.
Who's meeting there? Are you meeting with Ryan?
I'll be with Ryan, uh, Bill has been invited, Phil will be there and Ryan.
So there's no action at this time, moving forward, next time under old business. Item G, Georgia DOT project update, Jim? Might be that Old Highway five.
Yeah, I think Lonnie has got some information from that today. We went to the monthly road meeting at the courthouse, Lonnie.
Uh, they have indicated, uh, well, about a month ago, we had, we got an email from the DOT stating that they needed plans as far as our utilities. They have hired a few different groups to locate all of our utilities, and they were looking at the moving them to widen the road and everything. So we got in touch with Lamar at Mr. Turnstall's office. He sent out a booklet to, I have one in my office, and one was sent to the DOT to just meet their requirement as far as our utilities, and they're going to look at and see how far they have to be moved along with Mr. Turnstall's office. Um, there, we talked to him today, the question that I asked was, uh, when do you think this is going to happen? The people in Carthville that I've talked to says that it, we need to start moving forward with everything that we need to do because it was going to happen, but.
Time out, time out, I'm a little confused.
We're talking about the big project.
Okay, I thought we were talking about, uh, probably kind of speed work, where you were going to do the mapping?
Uh, that has been scheduled for this week. Now, this is the DOT project, I think, you're doing, you're on G now.
I don't know why, I got Old Highway five on it.
I can update you on that one.
Okay, okay, sorry, Lonnie, I was, I was trying, I was trying to figure out the speed work was going to come up.
The gentleman from the DOT today said that, uh, they would probably move forward of starting in like May, June, July of acquiring some properties and different things of, at, in the year of twenty twenty, as far as the finances.
They're not going to do it next year, two thousand nineteen, so we're looking, maybe if we start acquiring right away.
Well, that's the way we understood it today.
Funding was, uh.
Was in August of twenty twenty-two is when they're expecting to have all the funding set aside. Now, there is a utility aids grant that we can apply for, the, to help us pay for all the moving of the utilities, the relocating, and the people in Carthville has told me that we need to start working on that. So, uh, start moving forward with that project as far as seeing what we need to do to file for that grant. And, uh, Mr. Turnstall's office, Lamar with that office, he's, he's aware of how that works, and we're going to contact him and see what he needs from the city. So they say it's going to happen, you know, more, more conversation is happening now than it has since I went to work here. So they are willing to.
Did they discuss the amount of funding that would be available for relocation?
He said that it could vary, but it could, you know, it could pay for it off.
In the past, they discussed it would be an expense of the state.
Well, now there's a, there's a utility aids grant, and the DOT funds that. And they said we do need to go ahead and start moving forward to that and have that in line whenever they decide to move.
Okay, that would be something that we can pay attention to with the council and have a regular update on that and how we're moving forward. Okay, with that, let's spin back to Old Highway five.
The purchase order's been issued, been trailed to do that work, and is scheduled for this week.
Have they run the camera through it at all, anybody done any of that work yet?
That's, that, what's scheduled for this?
David and I were discussing the size of that coal pot. Did anybody get a chance to look at it?
That'll be determined when they run the camera.
Or go down and put a major stick on it, it's too small. But anyway, that's something David and I better catch the coal over, coke, whatever it wants. But anyway, anything else, counsel, on these two projects? Uh, we might leave them for old business.
Budget that doesn't have five on it, is there, I mean, I mean, it just.
No, no, that's enough that I made myself. Item H, request approval of two thousand nineteen operating budget and resolution to file.
Now, this is the final step in approving our operating budget for next year. We, I presented it to council, um, last month. We had a public hearing, and all the advertising has been done, it's been put out there for, available to the public all this time. So tonight, we're asking that you vote to adopt this budget for twenty nineteen.
Anytime a motion? Got a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen operating budget?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? I am reading also a resolution, do you have a resolution?
I do have a resolution.
Let's read it.
I had it printed out, I forgot it was one of you. Okay, resolution, whereas the council budget committee reviewed the mayor and staff's proposed operating and capital budget for calendar year twenty nineteen for the city of Jasper, attached herein and made a part of this resolution through this reference, and whereas the city council of the city Jasper, the city council reviewed the mayor and staff's proposed operating and capital budget for calendar year twenty nineteen for the city of Jasper as recommended by the council budget committee, and whereas the agenda for the November fifth and December third twenty eighteen meetings of the mayor and city council were duly posted, as well as the agenda for the November fourteenth public hearing, and the proposed twenty nineteen operating budget and all related material were made available to the interested parties. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Jasper adopt the twenty nineteen operating budget.
With that, I'll have, do this again with a motion to approve the resolution as read. Got a motion? Motion second, discussion? Being all in favor of what was your hand? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, committee, thank you, everyone involved. Item, uh, I, request approval of alcohol license for Pete King Garden, Son, you can do it where you're at.
Mr. Frank Peen, who bought the Pete King Garden, has, has gotten his fingerprints back and has completed his time of advertising, and we would ask tonight that his license be approved.
So he's met all requirements.
He has, yes.
We entertain a motion to approve, uh, the license for Pete King Garden, Garden?
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Being all in favor of what was your hand? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Son. Uh, item J, car club street closing update, Kirk?
So, on this, if you recall the previous minutes, I spoke to the owners and the businesses on Main, and at this time, I'm waiting to work with my cohort on contracting car clubs and such.
And what, give us feedback on what the merchants were saying, we actually have one of those tonight that came in.
So with my discussion with some of the business owners and merchants on Main, it was discussed that the car shows did not have a positive impact on our businesses. It was pretty simple, and it was across the board.
Okay, so, but no one has notified the car club yet? Are, are you solutions that we might be able to accommodate both parties?
I have gone now.
So we get to be on business again next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, item J will be going to old business next month. Other new business, Joe, welcome, item A, liability insurance renewal. It seemed like just yesterday.
Always is.
Joe, we're hoping that your number's fitting with our new budget.
I'm, uh, very glad to say that they do.
Got to get a motion?
I've got it all listed out right here, but I really want to thank Lisa and Stella. They have, uh, went beyond, I think, this year, and have must try to figure this thing out. The experience modification on workers' comp is, came from one six nine to one six one. We're headed in the right direction. And Stella is, she's really gotten in with the lost control. She's, she really likes the idea of it, and she's working hard. So with that, really the only difference we're seeing this year is purchase a new fire truck, and we brought back some equipment, I think, that had been parked, and I think it's been resurrected and put back for. And let's see.
Well, what we bring back, it was parked, I'm not sure, I'll have.
But she sent a whole new list, and we did pick up.
Oh, we sold, I thought we sold that car.
A lot of it did go, we took a lot of it off last year. But with that, that's just really the only.
Questions, counsel?
Do I see the asterisk under practices liability for this year, can you explain that to me?
Practices liability?
It's on page two, at the bottom.
That's page two, that's important, practices liability. That, we had an asterisk on it where, as far as the competitor, where I went out, we got it, they just didn't want to give any expense. They wanted to put it all inside the limit, I should have removed that asterisk. This, this year, it does include expense, and it's outside of your liability.
Okay.
So it's the same.
That, that's, that's my fault. One other benefit that is coming with that will be some. The new form here, identity theft. They are giving some identity theft to police officers, firemen, your professional employees, council. There'll be identity theft coverage for you in the event something happens to you, you know, you've got coverage for that as well. And I'm charged for it. It was just a add-on, a giveaway, so they say.
A giveaway?
They're trying to enhance their forms, which they have. You've got the brightest forms I've seen in municipalities, so it's, it's really a good program. Any other questions?
Uh, go ahead, go ahead and make for the public what the, what the rates are and what coverage is, just a little bit over your page, just, uh, keep a kind of reading between the lines here.
Okay, last year, the property custody and liability professional coverages, the city paid one twenty-eight, two fifteen. This year, with the addition of a fire truck, almost six hundred thousand dollars, I think, and a piece of additional equipment, premium went to one thirty-five, zero forty-eight. On the workers' comp, we had, we tried to estimate, and thanks to Lisa and Stella, what we thought any overtime would be, and we'd incorporated all of that in there. And even with that, it's still. It's bound up, you're going to be a three percent lower at the workers' comp cost of two oh eight. That's with the estimated overtime, so hopefully we won't get a big audit, and you may even get money back, is what we're hoping.
They went from one point six nine to one point six four?
One point six nine to one six one.
Okay, we've had more of a top claims payout and a few things like this over the years.
Oh, boy, yeah, we've had some tough years.
Pretty much, pretty much, on the road track.
We're headed in the right direction now, we're headed down.
And Lisa, do you want to tell us what we have budgeted for?
I don't have a total number.
What we budgeted for?
For all the departments.
Was it figured out here because we worked into it, so we're, we're good.
Well, yeah.
Glad you're getting that from your insurance agent. So Joe, you're going to talk about motion? Anytime a motion to approve this as presented, got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, I have a split decision. Motion is second. I have a split decision. You bet the clerk. And any discussion? Ben in on favor, what was your hands? Thank you, Joe. Thank you again. I've been putting this through the lab, but I want the public to have a good more idea.
Anything, anything that you need.
Item B, planning commission report. Robert Walker is not here, so Sonny, Lonnie, Lonnie, excuse me, Jim?
Son.
Son, we're deferring to you.
The planning commission met on the 30th of last month and they voted to recommend to the council that the project that JR had put before the city council over the planning commission, that it be approved.
Okay. They postponed their hearing, did they not? And they had, this meeting that they had tonight was a follow-up of a postponement?
It was tabled at the first meeting.
Okay.
Had, meeting was rescheduled and advertised until the Friday, the 30th.
Okay, why was it postponed?
One of the members wanted to review the property.
Okay, and was any discussion at the meeting over the review of the property or I wasn't, I was not there?
Member did go with, I think with JR and Lockman to the property and looked at it and got some more information. He came back and.
Okay, okay, I just, I know it's been on here for a while.
Right.
And did you have a chance to discuss with the planning commission concern I gave you at the meeting prior to?
Not at the planning commission because I had time to research it. So I think you have a letter in the package and I've got some information from research that's been done.
Okay, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you and address the issue. And council and JR, I think I spoke to you this morning and you were going to defer this, and I just want the council to be aware that this property that you own was served with water and sewer by a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission and the impetus from the ARC, the Appalachian Regional Commission, I'll stay on the term, is to create jobs. And this project was audited in the year 2014 and we took quite a, I won't call it a beating, but it was definitely a thrashing from an auditor from Washington DC on the fact that we had not met the requirements as they assumed would be completed on all this property zone commercial that had been developed for job creation. That's where my apprehension comes on the issue about changing the zoning without notifying the Appalachian Regional Commission that we have changed the rules in the middle of the string. With that, Jim, give us your report.
At the same time, you talked about in our prior meeting, possibility of restrictions on the Jifa loan.
No, ARC.
ARC on the grant or Regional Commission on the grant, Jifa on the loan.
Jifa has no restriction, ARC grants it.
That's what I determined today. Asha Bar Hartman told me that there was no loan restrictions, no jurisdiction.
Who is?
Is with Jifa.
Jifa, yeah.
Project manager with Jifa. He thinks we are unclear. Talked to Ethan Calhoun at Regional Commission and reading your letter from Tammy Decker, I believe his opinion was much the same that, well, not really seen any restrictions. He weren't willing, he wasn't willing to make a opinion on it until we spent some time researching it.
Well, along those lines, I asked for an engineer to give me that letter today. They wouldn't. I talked to Tammy Decker today and she is going to do research. She's concerned with the status of footing that we have. But my concern is, I went through a, at least a three-day ordeal with a gentleman from a contracted firm for the ARC and he was not happy with the city at that particular time. And Lisa, can I ask you to read this for the council dealing with the audit report that we got from this gentleman? Let's really, you can do a little highlight of what, what he's doing and then read the results. And from that, I'll let the council move forward, but my concern is with the liability of the city of Jasper and what we intended when this project, these two projects actually were done in order to develop that property for job creation.
Sonny, do you know when this first came to the planning commission for approval, what the date was?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I do not.
But the mayor clearly stated it's been on the agenda for quite some time. I'm just a little.
At least two months, isn't it?
Concern why the work session before we're going to potentially approve, approve it is when we get the concerns presented to us. Seems like some of this work could have been done proactively.
Saying to me like it would be, you can't expect me to do the work? I just had my intention that we got an ARC grant where we're trying to change a piece of property that was once set aside for commercial and instead it's an own commercial. They read the, I'm not sure what Mr. Proctor's asking me, but we'll go ahead and read the situation we're at. When we do these things, that means like this, Dr. Proctor.
I don't appreciate the tone, Mayor Weaver, but what I'm trying to understand is why, as a, as a project moves through the system, why these type things aren't identified early on so that they can be handled in advance, so that we can move a little more quickly on some of these projects.
Same to you with the tone and we'll move forward with this. Ms. Lisa, would you please read that?
I'll start with the objective. The firm that did the audit was Watkins Meagan LLC and they're no longer around, but they did the audit, they contracted with the ARC. They were engaged to conduct a performance audit of the city of Jasper, Jasper Water Storage Tank Grant for the period September 30, 29, 2009 to July 1st, 2013. The purpose of our performance audit was to determine the following. Funds expended and claimed for reimbursement from ARC and matching funds reported to ARC were valid program expenses and in accordance with the ARC grant requirements. Internal controls were in place to ensure compliance with the grant requirements and goals and objectives of the grant had been achieved. The summary, grant funds were used to assist in the construction of a new 500,000 gallon water storage tank and installation of 9,000 linear feet of supply line near the southern section of APD Highway 515 in Pickens County, Georgia. On behalf of ARC, Regional Rural Development reimbursed 300,000 in ARC funds. Move down to the scope. We completed a performance audit of the city of Jasper Water Storage Tank Project at the city hall of Jasper from February 17 through the 19th, 2014, as described under the section and under the audit methodology section. Our audit was based on the terms of the grant agreement and on the application of procedures in the modified ARC program. And I'm going to move on down to the results. Grant funds were used to assist in the construction of a new 500,000 gallon water storage tank and installation of 9,000 linear feet of supply line. Rural Development reimbursed 300,000 in ARC funds to the grantee during the period of the grant. Matching contributions of 770,758 were identified comprising 700,000 from Jifa in the form of a low interest fund to the grantee and the remaining 70,758 contributed by the grantee. Total expenditures for the grant were 1,070,758. We examined supporting documentation for all the expenses incurred against the grant. All expenditures tested during the audit appeared to be valid, adequately supported, and in direct relation in supporting the grant and its objectives. We also noted the grantee had appropriate measures, procedures in place to monitor contract compliance with Davis Bacon Act, fair wage requirements. Through inquiry, review, and observation, we sought to validate the outputs and outcomes expected from the grant award as detailed in the grant approval memo. Anticipated outputs were the construction of a 500,000 gallon water tank and the installation of 900 linear feet of supply lines. The anticipated outcome measure included in the grant approval memo was to create 300 new jobs within two years. During field work for the audit, we physically inspected the new tank. We also requested evidence from the grantee regarding the number of new jobs that were created as a result of the water storage tank, construction, and installation of the supply line, and determined that the performance measure of creating 300 jobs within two years had not been met. Through discussion with the grantee, it was noted that the city of Jasper's economy is currently in the midst of a recession. Consequently, numerous businesses have closed their doors and land development has stalled and businesses that were expected to open their doors upon completion of the water storage tank have not been able to do so. As a result, the city of Jasper's local economy has experienced a net loss in jobs over the last two years. With the infrastructure now in place, the grantee remains hopeful that the economy will recover and that the existence of the new water tank will be a catalyst to encourage new businesses to set up in the area. At the time of the audit field work, the project was still within the two-year period to accomplish the outcome measure cited in the grant approval memo. We recommend that ARC continue to monitor the anticipated job creation metrics through their validation processes.
Basically, council, water and sewer line would not be in that location without ARC grants and with rural development grants and loans. And my concern is, before you move forward with this, there needs to be a clarification from the Appalachian Regional Commission that this will be okay with them because they could, if they don't request their money, they could hold us up on the next grant, such as our wastewater treatment plant expansion, by going against their guidelines. This is their money that they gave to us for this water tank as well as a project in 1994, 95. They got the sewer line in that project as well. And every project up through there is zone commercial. And now we're going, now we're asking to change the property back to residential or to residential. And that's my only concern. If they're willing to do it and you're willing to vote to change it, I don't see a problem with it. But I just need for you to know, if I lived it and I've been there, that may be why my tone is a little bit more brushed than it needs to be.
Jim, have you reviewed this information?
No.
Can council be provided a copy of that?
Lisa, does it talk about what kind of jobs are created or, or zoning as it relates to creating jobs or does it just talk about jobs in general?
I don't see anything in it about zoning or the topic.
At several of the meetings that I've attended over the years, I was all about building houses, getting rooftops and whatever and running sewer. And ARC would totally remove itself in the conversation, job creation and job creation only. And I know Joe, we're going to talk about how multifamily, how houses going to have multifamily, but I asked that question back in the day and didn't get a good answer for it. But with that, I'll ask Jim, do you have anything to add?
No.
Mr. JR, you can be recognized.
Thank you. We've got some information that may be helpful to discussion. Will be helpful. Go a little bit different order than what I thought, but information we pulled up from package for each of you in regard to jobs creation when this issue was raised, round page one. Anybody else want to run? I've got a few extras. The, when the question comes up about jobs creation, I didn't, I just tonight heard the number, 300 jobs in two years in '09. Yeah, that was, yeah, good luck with that. You know what the economy was doing. Yeah, yes. So, you know, looking at, you know, what's, what jobs have, because that was my first question. What's the, what's the criteria and has the criteria been met yet? And, you know, and so, you know, I'm going back through and looking at, now my, my business partner, Craig Meford, was instrumental in developing a lot of the land where the Fats Restaurant is, where the shopping center is and all, back on Jonah Drive, we were considering tonight, Jonah Lane. And they, you know, those companies spent millions of dollars to extend. And the city provided the sewer and water, but it was all private money that put it in on Jonah Drive, Noah Drive. That sewer and water was all installed by the developers.
Attached to existing water.
Attached to existing, but those, that miles of extension.
That was likely to run there for job creation.
Right, that's correct. So, you know, looking at the job creation, since that was installed, since that time, we have Walmart, Home Depot and all their ancillary stores, Kroger and the stores around them, the shopping center where Craig decided Fats, Fats Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, we have a new car wash, Culvers is going in, H&R Block, we have New Beginnings, we have Body Flex, we have the dance studio, we have the entire industrial park. Now I'm just talking about, just looking at our neighborhood. I have to question about whether or not the number's already been met, but I don't have a specific census, so I can't say, but I'm just making, making the point. And if you look at, one of the things I want to share with you and show the council, it's just an overview here because from the city of Jasper, there's zoning ordinance for R3. It specifically says that these districts will be located in areas with convenient access to collector and arterial streets and can be developed as transitional uses between single-family districts and commercial districts. So just like to turn your attention to this Google map and you'll be able to see it as to where this is. There's Jonah Drive right here. There's residential and here's commercial. There's Walmart. There's a shopping center that's Fats. You can see, I, I can't, I don't think I could find a better spot to put some apartments that's not an industrial, that's not in the middle of a residential neighborhood that's going to have people driving through homes. If this was, you know, where we were having to access residential streets or something like that, I'd personally have an issue with it. Like, I can't, I don't think I could find a better spot to put it based on what that criteria is specified. So on the, on the first page of this book I just gave you, I'm talking about. Hey. Who asked you? And it says, the resident, we're talking about about 100 units approximately, assuming who live in those 100 apartments annually generate 3.06 million dollars for the local economy and support 33 jobs because of the people that live in those apartments. The operation of the apartments alone will create six permanent jobs and the construction of the apartments will generate 161 jobs. One of the other news, now you actually have this report previously, and I'm not sure if you read it or not, but there was a couple of references in here. One just brings, I'm not going to read all this stuff, it goes on and on. But it does say that the average value residential construction pays for itself and begins generating surplus revenue for local governments within the first year of construction. Not only is the revenue more than enough revenue to cover the current government expenses in a given year, it's enough to pay off interest on the debt within a year, typically, is what happens when you're doing a multi-family development. So I understand the, the issue about apartments, these are not rent subsidized, that's been brought up. These are at market rents for professional people, so we would be bringing 100 families, basically, with good incomes and that would want to live, you know, in Jasper and want to be drawn here. I think that given, you know, with these reports and other businesses and jobs that are created and that will be created, I don't see this as negative all because the alternative is that we leave it as is. And it's already been 14 years since it's been developed and it's still not created a job. Now I built a little office warehouse on Jonah Lane. That's, I did that.
You've got, you've got commercial already started on the other side of the road.
I, I did, but that's mine and I owned it and I have no issue with it. And I intend, if we actually, because that's just a small packaging company. I think you went and visited with Mark today, Mr. Mayor?
I did.
Yeah, he let me know. I thought that was interesting, but.
Well, you think that's interesting?
It was interesting.
Well, you might have to do a lot of things when you're trying to figure out what's going on with the city.
I understand. So if the, if the apartments are approved, it is most probable that, since I'm buying his business anyway, that we will relocate his business to a more industrial setting and I'll probably end up turning that into retail.
Well, you have actually stepped across the bounds with industrial already. It's a manufacturing and a commercial zone.
We're not, we're not manufacturing, we're just packaging. It's hope it fits in C2. We're not assembling, we're not manufacturing, oh, we're just putting some pieces together.
I still think they created jobs there, so I was proud of it.
We did create some jobs and I'm hoping to create some more jobs. I'm hoping to create.
And listen, 33 jobs. I'm just telling you a technicality that has come up with this property when it became more under the scope because I've not been doing a day-to-day operations job here like I have in the past. And I played catch-up on this once I realized that you were putting apartments on C2 property that was set aside for job creation. That's all I'm bringing up here. If you can get me a clear bill of health on this and you not give me one.
Well, that's why I'm giving you any reports right there. Well, that's why I'm giving you any reports like this.
You need to give that to the A R C and give it, that tells them that we have met their goal and not changed a piece of property from C2 to R3.
I don't see that we need the A R C approval. I understand what you're concerned.
I have a question, if I can.
Yes, I'll recognize you.
Thank you. How many units are we discussing?
This is 90, yeah, no, I know, we kind of jumped ahead here.
That's all right.
We're talking about 96 units on 12 acres, so that would be about eight per acre versus in typical, R3 can go up to 12, maybe a little bit more, but we're not looking for that, we're looking for 96 units on a total of 12 acres.
Well, that's the power lines overhead, do you look into that?
Yeah, we do. As a matter of fact, if you look at, let me show you this picture.
I don't even want to talk about that. You talk about the damn, my, my only issue is my A R C grant.
Okay, well, in regard, this, this layout was designed around that, the recent park, this parking lot is like this, and you, I don't know if you can see, set line right there, right there, that's the power lines. So, the parking is put underneath all the easement. This, this layout takes into account every easement that exists on the property, and still gives us a lot of green space, we have dog parks, we have tennis courts, two swimming pools, all kinds of green space, not asking the city to spend any money to support our project, this is totally self-funded, private money.
How many permanent jobs would that project create?
According to my numbers, close to 50. And now, not counting what the people that live there, all the jobs that they support because of having 100 families moving into town.
Where are those 50 jobs?
Pardon me?
Where are 50 jobs?
It's throughout the entire, not just the, there's six.
Construction jobs, more count than A R C.
No, no, well, I know that, no, construction jobs, there's 161 construction jobs for during the one year of construction that would be supported, 161.
With that, I'm giving you any points for A R C.
Yeah.
I'm one of the lying players.
I understand.
J R., you said, you said, how many jobs, 40?
Yes.
When you're on this first sheet, you said, when it talks about the operations, it says 100 apartments, that says six jobs.
Under the resident, looking at what the residents, then by having 100 family to the left, they, that they would support, those 100 residents would be supporting 33 jobs because of their, you know, they're living in town, they're buying, they're going to the local restaurants, they're spending money at the grocery, doing, having the dry cleaning done, they're living here. So, 100 families incomes come in, and that, it's a kind of an ancillary, it's a one-off support of jobs, as contrasted with what we have now, which is vacant land. Now, one of the things, if you look in this book, just if you flip to the, to first tab, you'll see a copy of the zoning ordinance from Jasper, and I just highlighted one, it's interesting, there are 18 specific permitted uses in C2 that I highlighted in yellow. It's in this one. So, there's 18 I highlighted in specific yellow that would create virtually zero or no jobs. One permitted uses are cell towers, which is creates zero jobs for local economy. Some, like, we could have a boat storage, contractor equipment material storage, I could be doing that there right now and generating virtually zero jobs and do that in perpetuity. What we're proposing is that the apartments are a far step above and way better than any of these things that are already permitted.
Do we have any idea of the 300 jobs that the grant will require, how many we have created, Jim?
First I heard the study this evening.
Bill, do you have an opinion?
I have one, I always have an opinion.
Do you see a?
I, I, the only thing, the only thing after listening to all this, I don't know what the rules are, I wasn't part of negotiating grants or loans or whatever it was, but I know.
Bill, I beg your pardon, sir. You and I, Joyner Smith and me, eternity, sat in the room for days talking about.
I've slept, I've slept.
Yes, you have.
But the only thing concerns me is that, why don't you get something from the A R C? So that you don't have to worry about paying that money back.
Or not being eligible for the next grant.
Which I think the next one's coming up.
We're hoping so.
I mean, what, what damage could that do?
Oh, call the board, maybe?
What damage could that do? I mean, just so you don't have to pay the money back.
Well, let's, let's look at your letter from Tammy Decker. I do recall, use period, thing had been in place. Please let me know when you, we'd like for you to research this at that time, I will give you a specific location, and if possible, specific project, I will find what I can.
And she is a chairman of the rural development. She replaced a gentleman who, you, at the time, Joyner Smith was the, you've operation officer of the rural development.
Been looking at it from the last couple of days, there was a merger that went on.
Now, there was a retirement, could have been. And she, she actually worked on one of our last grants as Mr. Smith was leaving, and I'm real sure it wasn't this one, but they have to go back, even I talked to the regional development center, the R C now, regional center out of Verone, and I talked to Governor Stone, and he was more in charge of the grants versus the gentleman you spoke with, but that's what, that's all we need, we need, we need to get the A R C approve this, allow us move forward, change zoning on a piece of property that they were holding our feet to fire four years ago. And they, Lisa will tell to this, that they were, how many, a year and a half they chasing after this particular grant? And they'll pick one from time to time, and they'll come back, and I believe that tells you, basically says they'll be back to look at this particular job. And if we rechange the piece of zoning that was job creation, we're going to have some explaining to do.
And I think that's what the point of, you know, some of these documents are, is to show what jobs that multifamily does create, and I have to back up and ask the question about it. When you take the jobs at Walmart, Home Depot and Kroger alone, that's got to be 300 jobs. It, it, the number has to have been met way before this ever was done, what about the, all this business on Confederate Avenue?
If you'll stop by, if you'll stop by Mr. Linda's office, you guys make a phone call to the A R C, explain to them where we are, and give this council a little leadership into the future of this property that was set aside for job creation, that now we want to have homes there or R3 as you have it. And with that, the council should be able to do what they want.
May I review the document, please?
The report?
Or may we?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you approve the stipulation with the clearance of the A R C? I mean, it just, are we looking at the timeline when they're trying to do, could it be approved to move out, and we have to plan it, so we're not paying them back? Instead of trying to have another meeting with this that we've had in the past, could we do it that way?
Do we think that's a possibility?
I'm listening.
Yes. I'll have him to read that before he, you know, work at it before.
I want, I want to protest, I want this to stay on the eye until we get it cleared up. We, we approve this, A R C, the public needs to know this is job creation property, and we met with these developers years ago, we were all happy when these guys came and bought the property and job, and tough times hit, and Joe, I can tell you, we all.
We haven't created hard end jobs.
And so, I think, I think the A R C would approve that, but we need to get their blessing on this. And I can't get an engineer, I can't get a rural development person to tell me that we're clear on it. They won't tell me, I asked my engineer today to send me a letter saying he wouldn't, or he could, and they wouldn't do it. So, and I'm catching up on this.
I'm just here for the zoning and for my reapplication, so I don't know what you have to do as a city, I'm happy to support, but I like her suggestion, conditional approval.
But that, that would need to be a good move, that we need to get it cleared up, come back and approve the zoning.
I don't know why you have to wait, but.
Because you can't start without.
Oh, I know.
I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve the approval of zoning for this development pending the A R C's agreeing that we've let the conditions of the grant.
I've got a motion, and it sounds like we got an echo, we got a second. You're getting an attitude now, you do this, and I will not sign the document that needs to be sent to, because A R C's got to sign off on this. My name is on, my name is on it now, theirs is not. Mr. Pickett?
Sir?
Is this legal, what we're doing?
Some things that you can do with stipulations, the zoning laws are a lot different. To be quite honest with you, I think you're opening up a can of worms that could be solved by just a little bit of investigation, so that we don't have to go into executive decisions to look at the law.
I've got a motion, I've got a second, any further discussion? Be in on, all favorable by show of hands. Don't start anything until this council gives you, or this administration gives you a go rate.
I'll call off my Bobcat rental for tomorrow.
You might sure. Item C, New Year's Eve celebration request, Jasper Merch Association. I know you don't want to really follow that, so go ahead.
Yes, I'm almost scared to be here now, so.
We don't know.
My heart has stopped beating a little bit after that, and we'll go on. So, I'm actually here for a couple of things, to talk about New Year's Eve. This will be our second year after we took it over last year from the city, and we are happy to sponsor it again this year. But the reasons that I am here today is obviously to talk about street closure, because you know, that's my job when I come here, and to also ask for some funding. I'm not sure what you want to address first.
Whichever, whichever you would like.
I'll just choose street closure.
Street closure.
So, we're asking that the, the street be closed at 6:00 P. M., and when I say the street be closed, that would be from Highway 53 to D. B. Carroll at 6:00 P. M. So that the DJ, so that the DJ is able to get set up, our vendors are set up.
At what time?
6:00 P. M.
Okay, is that not a little late, though? Normally it's earlier.
Well, that would be great if we could go earlier, we figured the latest we could go is 6:00 P. M., so.
It's amazing what this council approved, I asked earlier, you're going to need the time.
Exactly, it's amazing what they'll approve, and I'm, I mean, I'm just happy that we could get it at 6:00 o'clock if they able, if we're able to go early, that is great. But one of the things that I did want to talk about is, and I don't know if Lonnie can address this or not, but in past years, you've had the stage turned. What is the process to have that turned? Because it, we're trying to break the wind, it's so cold.
As far as?
You know, like, where was that for today or for yesterday?
There in front of the corral.
Yeah, instead of, instead turning it so that it's got the back of the stage pointing north?
Well, I mean, if you're going to close the street, if you're going to do that, then it's just a matter of putting, you talking about up in front of the progress like we have, it's just a matter of relocating it. If you've got the streets closed, there's not a problem.
Okay, that was great.
Let me address that. The thing about that, you're going to need a crew to come in midnight and take it down.
Yes.
Open it back up.
Right. So, that, I'm just kind of throwing things out here because it was brought to us and.
Because of expense, we kind of did away with the New Year's Eve celebration, and so that's going to bring the expense back, you know, bring your crew up to say that there.
Then we're good, we're leaving it where it's at. But I have to ask the question, so I'm good. So, so we definitely need to have it, I mean, set up well before it's.
You asked for 6:00.
I mean, I would love 4:00 o'clock.
What about 5:00, give everybody a chance to close, the storefronts down and move out, and you start closing it off. You're going to need, you're going, who you going to need to help you close the streets?
The police. And I've spoken to Lieutenant Dawkins, he was going to get started finding people to work and take care of all that, I haven't heard from him this week, though, but.
How's that going to be funded, Jim?
They're funding.
We are.
Thank you, Mark, okay. Let's shoot for 5:00 o'clock or 5:30, and that way it'll still be daylight, you can say that, you don't have to set up as long a floor as we have in the past, and you'll be able to do your thing.
Yeah, and the stage can go up at any time since it's going to go where it's sitting.
I've got someone here who's a merchant, yes?
Just, it's a Monday night.
Okay.
Doesn't affect me, you can close at 4:00 or 5:00, but other businesses are open, including Jack Dunn, past 5:00 o'clock, and it's a Monday night, and the next day's a holiday, everybody's closed, especially the drugstore. I'm just saying.
So, what are you saying, say it again, 5:00?
Well, yeah, let's say like us seniors need our medicine on Monday.
Okay, 5:00, 5:00.
And we don't get there all year.
Are you closed that day?
No, I'm open, it doesn't affect me at all, I'm just saying, don't forget, last year it was on a Sunday, New Year's Eve, this year it's on a Monday.
Yeah, we actually bring you a lot of business.
Oh, you actually do, I don't want you to move the stage either, but, but I'm just saying, it's a Monday.
Obviously, the stage is not moving, so we've made you happy tonight.
But it's just a Monday, and I don't know, just let everybody, if you close it earlier, make sure people know, you know, if you're going to, if you, if you get your scripts from Jack Dunn, you show up at 4:00, the street's closed.
You also have people trying to get home at that time of evening as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, close on Monday.
That would work better on the public and probably on your budget.
6:00 P. M. works for me, we will, we will make it work. Because the stage is going to be where it's at right now, it's not going to be that much, and, and the DJ was okay with 6:00 P. M., so.
Yeah, I think 6:00 would be all right.
Let's get a motion from the council to close the street at 6:00 P. M. that you're requesting, and sorry about the.
Yes, sir. No, no, that's fine.
Are we going to back up at 1:00 on the Sunday?
Yeah, as soon as they get out of there, we, we hope, probably, you know, by, by 1:00 is what we ask for.
Okay, you got to need a motion. Motion to approve the request from 5:00 to 1:00, thereabouts. You should be able to.
I thought we were doing 6:00. 6:00 to 1:00.
Did I say, okay, I'm sorry, changing it backwards, I give it to you. Okay, 6:00 to 1:00.
Yes.
We got a second discussion, be in on, all favorable by show of hands, unanimous?
Okay, the second reason I'm here is, we are in need of funding. So, I've gone before this, the county commissioners, and now I'm coming before the city council to ask for a $1,200, what's the word I'm looking for, $1,200 to help fund it. We cut the cost down a little bit compared to last year, we're thinking we need about $6,000, what I've asked for is $1,200.
How much did the county contribute?
$1,200.
What did we do last year? What did we do?
You paid, the DJ was already taken care of last year, and then you, we, 15, what's it, 15?
$1,500.
$1,500 last year, yes, and then the DJ.
And then ask last year, y'all be doing cleanup afterward or?
Yes, we already have a request into the sheriff to do like we did last year and use the prisoner, and we've already allotted for officers if that needs to be. If not, then we will, we will make sure that it's done, we will, we will hire somebody to do it. Yeah, it was very efficient, they were done in 30 minutes last year, it was, it was very quick, because it was cold and they were running really fast, so.
If you can reach towards a big freezing, they're more fast.
Yeah.
With that, would entertain a motion? Motion to approve the $1,200 request, second?
Second.
Motion, second discussion, be in on, all favorable by show of hands, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Question, would you?
Yes, sir.
Allow them to touch base on the Christmas parade, ma'am?
Yeah, sure. You wanted to give enough?
I would be happy to give a report on the Christmas parade, as we know, it was scheduled for Saturday, and we just, we got together around noon on Saturday and discussed, and everybody looked at their weather apps, and we made the decision, rather than to cancel, to just postpone, so we all. And we made the decision rather than to cancel, to just postpone, so we all made as many phone calls to as many people as we could. Is this something we can do? Are we not able to do this? We came up with the decision that that's what we were going to do is postpone it yesterday. I really can't speak to the front of the parade because I was at the back, so some other people can probably do so. We were really happy with the turnout. We only lost two of our floats and actually gained one that had been in the, the ball ground parade was the semi truck with the Santa sleigh on it.
I thought you were going to say the basketball coming back in Carter.
Say that again?
I thought it was a basketball that's coming back in Carter.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, but. So for us postponing it, we gained back the football team, the cheerleaders, the band because they were not able to be in the rain, so it was a tough decision for us to make, but we feel like it was the best decision. I've had several phone calls today saying that they thought it was probably the best turnout they've seen in the 12 years that we've done it. As well as people seem to really like to have it on Sunday, so. I, I was very pleased with the way it turned out. Even as much stress as we all went through on Saturday was, it was the right move.
A lot of overlap with the tour of homes too.
And we love that and, and we want to maybe look at and keep doing that because that was a great thing.
They sold 500 tickets and we had other new people come through, but it was, it was a nice crowd.
It was a nice crowd. We were down there a couple of times. I was impressed.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you.
Item D, David Hall, request for approval of pump at Cove Well.
I have the paper up there with each member that I handed out the other night, but I wanted to give you another copy. Just to get on the estimate on installing the pump at the Cove, the new Cove Well number three. Total cost of $24,659.74. This pump, council has previously approved. It was on the budget under pursued water source. We had $50,000 set aside for that. We've only spent $15,000 of that so far actually drilling the well. The, of course, the next phase of this is to test the well and do a pump test. And as we talked the other night, we can go ahead and install a pump and a motor that if we need to, we can use on one of the other wells versus paying for a drawdown to be done. So it's already on the budget, but Jim said it'd be ideal to make sure you guys were okay with us using the same company, Firewell Building, that actually drilled the well.
You have a motion?
So?
Motion to approve the request for the Cove Well pump. What was that number again, David? Is it second? Have a motion, second, discussion? Be in and out of here by show of hands. Thank you, council. Thank you, David. Item E, request for approval for the 2018 annual audit firm, Rushton and Company. Ms. Owe?
Counsel in your pocket, and I gave this to you the other night, their engagement letter from Rushton and Company. Three years ago, they offered to keep the fee the same for the next three years, and this is the last year of that. The audit will not exceed $17,290. An additional $5,000 if there were to be a single audit, which shouldn't be required this year. And we're asking that you approve the signing of this engagement letter.
As a motion. A motion to approve engagement letter?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Ms. Lisa, the single audit you were discussing, that's if we receive federal money at what level?
$500 on there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Be in and out of here by show of hands? Item F, request for approval of employee Christmas bonafis.
Council Mayor, at the work session Thursday night, we had a discussion of this subject and looking for recommendation for consideration.
I make a motion to give the Christmas bonuses and a one-time service award in the following amounts. Less than one year of service, $150. One year to 10 years of service, $250. 11 to 19 years of service, $500. 20 years or more of service, $750. $100 from each tiered amount is the Christmas bonus. The remainder is a one-time service award to recognize the dedication of each employee.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
What was the second you said? $250 for?
Yes, ma'am.
What were?
One year to 10 years of service, $250. This is, while we're in the discussion phase, this is, you know, we're, we're discussing a salary study, job descriptions being set and performance evaluations coming to the city's way. And this is one step in the right direction.
Any other discussion? Be in and out of here by show of hands? Thank you, Nouns? Item G, alcohol license renewal for 2019. Mr. Underwood?
We have had everybody but two people renew their license. The ones that have renewed it this month is Bubba Q, Fats Cafe, Ingles, China Convenience, Quick Trip, Race Train, The Last Catch, Murphy USA, and Salmini Vela T L L C. We have, we lack the Woodbridge and Madeline's.
Okay, let's leave that out of this one. Is that a motion for council to approve those that were presented for renewal? A motion to approve? Motion second, discussion? Be in and out of here by show of hands? Thank you. Some of those you just mentioned have just been approved. Now who has not that you anticipate?
Who has not is Madeline's Cafe and Bakery and the Woodbridge Inn. But at this time, the Woodbridge Inn is, is subject to being sold. And at this time, they are operating under Han's license, which doesn't run out until the 31st of December. She, Ms. Henderson, I think is the lady that's buying the Woodbridge. And she is coming in tomorrow to apply for her own license beer and wine. And then that will be considered by the council over the next two meetings.
This is, okay, this is, we got another meeting?
No. This will be.
This is, this is.
This will be next year.
So she will not be able to start the New Year with a beer and wine license? Does she realize that?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that information.
Sonny, what about Carlos?
I'm sorry?
Carlos from Windsor.
Who is that?
I understand he's here tonight to ask the council something out of honor.
Well, I have my application in for renewal for beer and wine, right?
Right.
Okay, that I do have, so that should have been approved in the first one.
Was his name Salamans?
Maybe four?
No.
No.
I just want to hear something pronounced it again.
I know.
Okay.
No, but.
He can't sleep.
Okay. With that, I guess we're down to finish with Sonny's request. You have anything else, Mr. Underwood?
No.
Okay, since we're talking about alcohol, we just happen to have a guest. Would you like to defer part of your time to Carlos? Carlos, would you like to approach the council? It says we don't have anything official. It's always, it's always exciting when you approach the council.
Oh, yeah, it's. That's it, though.
I'm a guest, sir. You hit your stay on.
Yeah, a little under the weather today. Thank you.
You just sort of be, the type, the, you'd be on TV. What can we do for you, sir?
I was going to ask for an application for distilled beverages too. So for 2019, on top of the beer and wine. But you know what? We've been going back and forth with the, are we going to lower it? Aren't we going to lower it? Looking at it. I spoke with Jim the other day and Kirk. And I said, from what I understand, only three more businesses would possibly go for the liquor, the full distilled, correct?
Yes.
So my suggestion was, at the current rate of income for the five existing distilled liquors.
By the drink.
Right.
By the drink.
Yeah, it's $15,000. So if you have three more committing, which is taking from five to eight, you divide the $15,000 by eight, lowering it to about, lowering it about $1,200 roughly, making it 1875 for distilled liquor. So that's a possibility. I would like to put out the petition for distilled. I know you have to go through two meetings before you can approve that, but.
I did mention to Carlos and I believe that would be an ordinance change that's going to take two.
We've addressed this already. You missed the meeting when we came up with the final solution.
Wow, I know. Because I thought, I thought, I, I didn't know you were having that strong a solution that night. But either way, I didn't know that it would be just get the ball rolling per se. I don't know that I'm going to. So my question would be this, if you, if you did approve it, I probably wouldn't be able to get licensed till February anyhow.
We couldn't approve, change the order that's already charged people for the year.
Yeah, we have kind of, we were already there.
Why don't you just fess up for the full mountain, be a full service bar?
Well, I guess if I'm applying today, then by January 1st, I could fess up for the full mount. And hopefully, after you're, you review it again.
We can look at you like with everyone else.
Right.
You can catch Mr. Underwood. If you're not able to check tonight, we probably get, barely get you under the wire.
No, sir.
It's too late for him, isn't it?
Yes. Anyhow.
Well, any questions, Mr. Carlos from the council?
For me to the council?
Well, for them to you.
That's what I thought you meant.
So he's not on the approval list? That was my question.
He don't, he don't have a.
No, not for distilled, just.
Beer and wine.
For beer and wine.
For beer and wine, yes, right.
He didn't put you on the beer and wine list.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Am I only approved for beer and wine? I had my application in for beer and wine.
Yes, you have been approved. They approved you tonight.
Thank you, yeah.
What's the name of this firm?
Windsor.
Oh, it called me. I think I remember.
We kept it simple. We made the LLC the same as the DBA, so we wouldn't forget.
First Mountain City, Warren Bridge.
That's not bad. It's a good name. I have to spill liquor.
But anyway.
But anyhow, any, I'm just, look, we're, we're struggling, okay, to make it. It's, it's that simple, all right? Business doesn't get driven down to the main street unless there's an event like Christmas Parade, which, you know, yes, sure, when we have New Year's, Christmas, Jeep Fest and Marvel Fest, we do tremendous.
Only got three and six to one more day to go.
There you go. And that's, that's the killer, so. And like, like we asked before, there is, what's the vision to drive business not only to Main Street in Jasper, but just to Jasper itself? And is, is the vision of the council to grow and have visitors, not necessarily just buy homes and create new homes, which, which helps still. But there's other ways if you want to control growth to drive business to the city, which is good business you're driving. And I think it's all by advertising and promotion, which I don't see, you know, and I think that starts with personally maybe a better website for the city, promoting stuff that we do have here, our mountains, our wineries.
Were you jumping on the city because I didn't like your lot?
No, not at all.
Carlos, the chamber.
Not at all. I'm just looking for answers and correction.
The chamber's working on a vision and, and I know you've talked to Amberly.
I did, but to be honest with you, Dr. Proctor, and I, and I love Amberly. She's great. But, but the, the plan for the chamber is to hire somebody to create a client.
No, that's not, that's not accurate.
Okay, well, basically, that's what I got from my meeting. And I, and I understand that too because that, at least that's going in the right direction. But I, that's what I came away from that meeting with nothing else that gave me a light at the end of the tunnel. You know, so. And that's all I'm looking for. And I'll help in any way I can, suggestions, whatever. You know, I think it's on my websites, email list. There's people that live in the city. You could, there's a lot of people that come up from.
I think I have something that's going to top that. Lisa, could we recall the motion? I don't remember him being on the list.
I didn't.
I believe we made a motion and he's not on there.
Cut your list out, son. Your list with his beer and wine?
We made a motion.
I did not his name down. And I did, that's why I asked the question as well. I don't think he called your name out, so that was why I was.
Did you really ask for it?
No, he was, he was approved in November. So he's the one that.
Okay.
He was approved today. We had three people that had to be in by today or they could not have a.
We're not having a meeting.
Would not have a, you're not going to have another meeting in, in 2018, so there would not be another chance, so. Three people I went to see today paid their money today, and he was one of them.
Okay, I just wanted to, we just wanted to make sure.
No, and I thank you because.
I mean, because I.
I'm the one who out the cold, so.
That'd be terrible to put it down New Year's Eve.
I had no wine, no wine and beer or anything.
So, okay, that's what I wanted.
You're getting to 12:00 o'clock.
You're good to 12:00, so seven before dinner.
That's good because nothing good happens after 12:00, so. But anyhow, my, my, I'm just looking for some direction, looking for ideas, a plan. And, and is that the plan? Is that the vision? Maybe it's just keep it how it is. I don't know. I don't know what you just want to do. But when I look around us and I see L.J. booming and, and Blue Ridge building booming and I think our downtown area and city is much nicer than any one of us. What do they simply do to drive?
Downtown lines, we've looked at a lot of that, but when you're the only draw down there.
But, but all fairness, Ann, let me tell you something. Until we start drawing people there, nobody else is coming open businesses.
I know, it is a catch 22, but you're the only one down there that's open. It's hard to say go downtown.
New York Pizza's open too and, and Woodbridge is. And New York Pizza, I think, is open seven days a week, not six. You know, and, and, and that's fine because there's inexpensive ways to drive business to Jasper and draw these people that are driving past us and going to L.J. every weekend and during the week too, during Apple Fest. And it's just a matter of marketing. Like I've said before, we have a billboard bigger than this wall out on 515 that says, "Come visit Carter'sville." And, and so I don't know what it takes to put billboards up. I don't know what the cost is. Who is, who funds it? Who is willing to fund it? Aside from the chamber is the city too. But I just want to get the ball rolling to know where we go to start doing these things. That, that's all I'm asking.
Any final questions?
Carlos?
Uh, son?
One other thing I, I'd regret to tell and probably bring you up next month, so I need to go ahead and tell you about this. One other, one other record that has not paid for their alcohol license this year is Pueblo Grill. I can't speak to them, so I don't know what they're going to do. But they are one of the five people that hold a liquor license in the city of Jasper.
I, I think after the first of the year, we're not going to try to start this tonight. After the first of the year, even though it's going to entail changing the prices, whatever, I will form a committee in January of two people, two council members that will work with you and study and possibly come back with a more focused effort to get the council to look at dropping the prices, even though this year we've already gotten people paid.
So one other question then. For the future also, if you couldn't lower the cost, could you break it down into payments? I think Woodstock did that in the beginning of their career when they were building downtown. They broke their liquor licensing up into monthly payments.
So you can pick as much as you want?
Yeah. Well, let's face it, if I apply for my license in January or, I mean, June, you're going to prorate it for. it for six months anyhow?
Actually, we've changed that rule, then, with Sonny, to keep people from getting a, picking out the best three months and not buying them the other part of the year.
The council has to approve whether they get one or not.
Right, yeah, but you can't stop that, picking when you want it.
Yeah, which makes sense, though, by new business.
It's so difficult to get a liquor license anyway. I can't understand why anyone would want it for three months when you have to go through the.
Now, the only reason for three months would be if I just, if you just come to the city and go open your restaurant, like I originally did, I opened in June.
Again, let me start by saying that we gotta move forward, but be here in January, I will form a count of, of committee that will work with you and anyone else in town to look at this, because we need to start this in January. Hopefully, 2020, or 2020 would be the time when we would start making these changes. You've started hitting us toward the end of the year when we were trying to get a license.
Well, I gotta be honest with you, because I wasn't sure if I was staying or not until a few weeks ago. I was really thinking about going out, because, you know, and then I've had this discussion before, I've even had this discussion with the chief. You know, I couldn't went to Atlanta, I couldn't went anywhere else to go in the business. I chose to come here. And, and I like it here, but if I'm not making money and I'm struggling, and I know part of my decline is me being out of the restaurant for a good eight weeks when I had my surgery, that hurt me, too. That set me back, because I, I lost my main cook, he was gone for a month to Italy. I would, I, I wasn't there, and I really didn't have anybody at the helm, so I know the food wasn't coming out consistently and the service was off. You know, I lost at least two to three thousand dollars a week in income from that. And that's why I'm at the point like.
Well, we're very, we're very interested in seeing you succeed, and we will start this in January. We can't start you with a license in January unless you wanna pay the full deal. And we're very sorry that you're having issues. We love our Main Street and the fact that we got businesses and more businesses to open, we got, we want New York Pizza to prosper, and we like Sixty-One Main, and we like two more restaurants to open up. And you will ultimately, with that, if you could get five or six restaurants on Main Street, you would be a destination.
Absolutely.
And so right now, right now, we're, by the way, that's open, we'll stop location.
Right.
So we need, we need to change that, and we'll look at that if you will, especially our meeting tonight, we will start this and change it.
I was disappointed when, um, but Grace had them backed out on the corner.
Yeah, but we're still, we're still looking.
Because that would have been a, a great add to the downtown area, for sure.
Thank you for coming, appreciate your interest. Mayor's report, financial report, Lisa, you got anything to add?
Uh, council, you have the finance report in your book for November of eighteen. We collected one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in local option sales tax this month, for a total of one point, one million for the year, about a hundred thousand more than last year at this time.
Local option, because that's not squash, council, that's local option.
This is local option. Uh, squash, we collected ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, for a total of nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. Our cash balance right now in squash account is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So we're just a little short of a million this year on squash?
Almost eight hundred thousand. All funds are at or right below budget. We've got one month left to go, and unless y'all have any questions, that's all I had to add.
Questions, council? Okay, Lonnie Road and Other?
Just a couple of things. I went to meet with the DOT up at the Cass White exit, out from Cardinal, to one of their district offices. And the, uh, there's been a contract that has led out to Barto pavement. They are moving, supposed to be moving in this week, or definitely the following week to close the crossing at Antioch Church in 515. Uh, the city, the land in three corners is inside the city limits, that's the reason they include us in this meeting. But they're putting in what's called a J-turn, and you, you can't cross anymore, you have to go back toward LJ to, to come to Jasper, and you'd have to go toward Jasper to go to LJ from those two roads. But that, that contract has been led to Barto pavement, and they'll be moving in and starting to work out there. Uh, the other thing is, met last week with the, uh, gentlemen that are, the company that's putting in the mass light arms at Main Street and at Community Bank. They were looking at our utilities, looking at the sites, they were up here in, at the red lights. They are doing two in Giver County, one in Fanning County, and most of those areas are grass and just dirt, so they're gonna do them first. And plus, our mass arms have not been here, have gotten here yet, so by the time, they're hoping that by the time our mass arm gets here, that it will be done with the other jobs, and they will start construction. And they want to be very careful and take their time in, we got the basketball monument there, they, they're gonna be very protective of it. DOT has instructions on to wrap it in plastic and make sure that they don't get cement on it. They've got some specific instructions, they understand their water line is real close to the bank there, so they're looking at that. But it could be the end of February, first of March, before that happens, once our mass arms get sick.
Uh, any questions, council?
Do you have an update on the brush?
Actually, that was discussed today. They have had problems with different companies. They've had, the second company came up here and started the work right above Philneft Church Road. They moved up to Appalachian Court. They lost the contract, don't know why, that's the DOT issue. They spoke today that they actually have another company, and they will be coming in, didn't they say, Jim, in January?
January.
January. And they feel real good that this company will take care of the problem.
Lots of bad luck getting people to do the work. Before we move forward with this, the J-turn in Talking Rock, I want to go on the record, I'm sure with the mayor of Talking Rock, worst idea possible that they could be doing up there. And we've had fatalities there, few fatalities, and it's a very dangerous intersection as it is, but I don't see what they're doing that's gonna make it any better. And the only way to make it better, and I'm not an engineer, but I did spend a night on the Hallein Express once, they should put a traffic light there and turn old State Route 136 all the way down to Talking Rock. They have just closed Talking Rock economically, you can't get to Talking Rock from there. And I think they've not created, they've not created a safer environment for the firemen we run calls up there. Uh, and I still live in fear of coming off the hill from Biggins, coming down, just watching the cars move in front of me like a slow wreck waiting to happen, because you're doing eighty miles an hour. This is most dangerous intersection from Biggins to, well inside the ceiling, it's like to the water tower coming over south, it's just dangerous. People have been crushed in those acts of high speed. Randy, you got anything to add, that bit of firemen and a mayor of Talking Rock?
Well, I'd just like to say I'm, I'm a disappointed in Rick Daxler, the one that said he got stomped, and then all of a sudden it popped back up.
Who, who had it stopped?
Rick Daxler.
Did he really?
He said he did, anyway.
I thought it was stopped, I've heard, I've heard rumors it had been stopped as well, and they forgot to tell the DOT. But anyway, just, all the people who've listened to this discussion tonight, just be careful coming from LJ to Jasper and vice versa, because this one is gonna be confusing to begin with, and Randy Banks, who said he best wasn't, as a public curator we had in Talking Rock, I don't go that way anyway, I go down Highway Five when I go, when I go to the city of Jasper, so.
I would like to add disappointed in Commissioner Young, too.
Well, we gotta be careful, now, we're talking about Senator Commissioner.
Like I say, I mean, he was at that meeting, too, so.
It's the state route, they'll do what they want, but everyone note that it was, there wasn't effort, public curators are just that, we get to voice our opinion and move on, that's what we do. Anyway, thank you, guys. Next item is police chief, lovely, you can do it from there, Greg, if you want.
All right. Jeff, voice part for the month of November responded to seven hundred and thirty-two calls from 911, responding to fifty-seven motor vehicle accidents. Issue a total of ninety-three citations for the following, one DUI, fifty-two speeding, two seat belt, two shoplifting, two unlawful use of wireless device that's texting or driving, one uninsured motorist, twenty-nine miscellaneous enforcement suspended over the road. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of one hundred and twenty-nine citations for grand felony, city court of two hundred and twenty-two. Issue a total of twenty state warrants for the following, one for theft, lawful mislaid property, two misdemeanor shoplifting, one felony shoplifting, two entering auto felony, three financial transaction fraud, car felony, one fault infringement, two simple battery, one sexual battery, two criminal pet pass, and five counts of obstruction of office felony. Miscellaneous calls responded to forty-three, a long call, sixteen domestic, twelve harassment, six trespassing order, fifty-nine suspicious activity, twenty-eight domestic and investigated one murder.
Steve?
Mayor and councilman, fourth month of November, the city's fire department responded to eighty-three murders. Those were no structure fires inside the city, one outside the city. Two vehicle fires inside, none outside, no grass or brush fires in or out. Thirteen motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, none outside. Twenty-seven emergency medical calls inside, twenty-eight outside. Twelve other calls in, none out. Twelve hundred and fifteen calls. Our expecting to look at two sets of plans and conduct an eighteen minute search.
Questions, council?
Steve, this Christmas guy, you need to say about Christmas trees and decorations?
No, it's definitely, keep your Christmas tree water and the strength of your life. I shared a video where from Fire Department Facebook, paying not long ago, the Christmas tree fire, it takes less than thirty seconds. Protect your house, totally involve in whatever word your tree is. If you're gonna have a live Christmas tree, please be careful.
I'd like to thank all our guests for being here this evening. Mr. Simmons, can I ask you what the heck you're doing here?
Um, I didn't have anything to say.
David was our former finance director way back in the wind, and David, what used to be your favorite word when I'd wanna overspend on something? Where's the money tree?
I've already forgotten.
Who's with you?
This is my daughter, Olivia. I'm here, she's part of the Dickens Team Leadership Program, so she's here as one of the requirements for her course of study there is to attend a public service meeting, so she's here for credit.
Okay.
She will need your signature.
She need the agenda or anything?
Yes, we'll just need your signature on her agenda before we leave for proof that she's here.
Love to.
Mayor Max, could please give one question?
Yes.
Lisa, do we have an update on the fire truck invoicing issue, or can I build us an additional amount, or?
Yeah, you're gonna make sure the amounts are the same.
Tax law.
Oh, well, but, yeah, I, I got with the auditor, and he, he looked through everything, and he advised us to sign it, he said it was okay. Dead issue costs.
John, you ready to JY say?
Uh, they had their big cheerleading competition, which, so, Joe, it went very well. Wrestling's going strong, kids are staying active, that's what we knew.
With that, would entertain a motion to adjourn?